It's 7:00 o'clock on the wall. It is 3 o'clock, or as we see in the military, 1500 hours. We call to, uh, call to order the board of directors' regular meeting, study session for Thursday, November 17th, 2022. Could I roll call, please?
Director Griffith.
Present.
Director Grasha. Director Grasha, can you hear us?
I'm sorry, I'm having troubles. I could hear you. I, I've got some kind of bug crawling through this computer right now, but I'm gonna try and stay with the meeting.
Thank you. Director Sewell.
Here.
Vice President Wright.
Here.
President Martin.
Here.
Thank you. We have quorum.
We will skip the rules of procedure until Monday. Do we have any members of the public that wish to speak to us today?
There are no members of the public present.
Okay. Next on the agenda is, uh, human resources report, uh. Pardon?
Yeah, well, we're going to, usually we do that on.
Mr. Wallam, your mic, please.
My deepest apologies. Um, on my, we would, usually we do this on Monday, and that will happen. Um, again, we have 10 individuals that we want to recognize. We have some pretty significant ones there, too, so it'll be fun. However, um, I will not be here on Monday. Um, I will be on vacation. Um, I have my brother-in-law coming into and, um, I am going to be at this place called Sensi.
Called what?
Sensi. It's.
Okay.
Don't ask me some health thing that my wife is gonna make me go to with my brother-in-law sometimes.
Okay.
I can't, I can't do it. I will not be here. I'm taking all next week off.
Okay.
I'll be, I'll be on call most of the week, but that particular day I can't.
So Brian will be here, is it correct?
Brian will be here to go through the list.
Okay.
I wish I could recognize them, but I did not know for sure. We were gonna recognize them today, but I did not know for sure that I was going to be available because I was, uh, in the process of being selected for jury duty.
Okay. Moving on to item seven, resolution 2022-27. A resolution of the Board of Directors of the Mission Springs Water District proclaiming a local emergency persists, re-ratifying the proclamation of a state of emergency by executive order, Anna Zanora's dash 09-21, and re-authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the Mission Springs Water District for the period November 23rd through December 22nd, 2022 pursuant to the provisions of the Ralph M. Brown Act. That is a routine thing that, uh, item that we have addressed at each, uh, previous, uh, board meeting. If you have any questions on that, uh, we'll bring it up on Monday. Okay, so move on to item eight. Item eight, a letter of agreement for collaboration and cost sharing for the Missions, Mission Creek Sub Basin, Sub Basin Annual Report. It's recommended to authorize the general manager to execute the, and letter of agreement for collaboration and cost sharing for the Mission Creek Sub Basin Annual Report for Water Years 2021 through 2022 through 2025 to 2026. Pardon?
Yes, um, Steve Edbetter will provide you with, um, a background on this. This is something that we've, we've approved annually. Uh, we need to do it. Severe consequences if we don't. We've agreed to share the cost of that report. Uh, but it gets to be cumbersome, and so CVWD asks us if we could do this in one approval so that you know if you, if something happens, then we don't, then we won't, you know, and we don't have to do it. But Steve, do you want to take it from there?
Certainly, General Manager Wallam. Good afternoon, President Martin and members of the board. Uh, following the enactment of Sigma, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, DWR approved the Mission Creek Sub Basin Alternative Plan. Um, and that's a functional equivalent to a groundwater sustainability plan. Um, so in that act, DWR established that the district had put together an adequate plan to ensure sustainability in the Mission Creek Sub Basin. That plan was put together by the Mission Creek Sub Basin Management Committee comprised of Coachella Valley Water District, Desert Water Agency, and Mission Springs Water District. Um, since that time, or since about 2017, um, since that plan was approved, or that alternative plan was approved, excuse me, the DWR requires that we submit annual reports. These annual reports summarize the actions that were taken throughout the year towards sustainability in the groundwater basin. Whether that we look at groundwater demands, we look at groundwater usage, we look at any actions that were taken to cut down on water losses, we take a look at imported water deliveries, so on and so forth as part of that annual report effort. Since 2017, we've worked again collaboratively, collaboratively with Coachella Valley Water District and Desert Water Agency to submit these reports annually. And each year, we've executed a letter of agreement for that effort. And what we're really after here is to cut down on the administrative procedures and set a five-year term for this agreement to continue that collaboration and cost sharing. What that means is that we're gonna continue to share data, procure consultants to prepare this annual report, coordinate with DWR, and cost share. The cost share is an equal split, one-third for each agency. Um, since 2017, the annual report total cost has been in the $50,000 to $75,000 range, which means that Mission Springs cost share has been in the roughly $20,000 to $25,000 range. Um, being that this is gonna be a five-year term where in essence signing up for, um, you know, that amount over the next five years. Um, but again, it's required to maintain compliance with Sigma. Um, with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions from the board? Director Grasha?
Um, you know, I, I attend these meetings with the other board as well as, of course, this one. You know, I don't see that these reports, when they're completed, are discussed thoroughly among board members. And I understand why some of these things get kind of heavy and, and, and we leave it up to staff to, uh, uh, you know, stay on top of this stuff, but for, uh, directors to, uh, argue on behalf of their, um, pet issues, they have to be able to, uh, have some kind of, uh, study, uh, understanding of what's in these reports. It's, it's where the meat and potatoes of the job that we do is. And I would, uh, recommend that this board, other boards in the district, uh, uh, spend some time bringing their, uh, directors up, up to speed on the, uh, uh, items that are part of these. We're just not approving money. We're, we're approving knowledge, and if the board members don't have that knowledge to, uh, argue, uh, uh, for better quality water for the constituents, they'll get caught, uh, and not a, able to fully understand what it is we're doing here. So going forward, I hope that we can, uh, as a, a board here at Mission Springs and a board across the freeway, be able to, uh, spend some time reviewing these reports, uh, on top of just approving the funds for them to be written. Thank you.
Director Sewell, do you have any comments? Director Griffith? Uh, no, I have nothing. Okay, Vice President Wright.
Um, yeah, I just got a question. Um, as, as far as the, the, this is the three general managers, correct?
Yes.
Just these meetings?
Yes.
And then you, I think you got Steve with you, right? You got some staff with you, too, right?
Oh, we all, all three of us do.
Yeah, okay. Well, my, my question is basically, do you guys have to, do you guys ever vote on this amongst yourselves? Um, or, or is it just something in agreement and you all always seem to agree on it? So there's no real rub there or what?
I'll, I'll let Steve answer, because both of us, yeah, we, we've argued over this and for years. And yes, you do, this, today, there is no report. We're not, we're not approving the report. Uh, that
It's just the money. I get it.
But when does it do, Steve? The February?
It's due, it's due April 1st of 2023.
Yeah, April 1st.
I, I guess I was just wondering, do we have a vote and say, uh, to say what's really gonna happen on this?
Yeah, Vice President Wright, the Mission Creek Sub Basin Management Committee was born out of the 2004 settlement agreement with the other agencies.
Right.
And that agreement has dispute resolution clauses in it. Um, over the years, we, we've really come to an agreement and we've really been working, uh, been a little bit more of a well-oiled machine the last five or seven years as far as it comes to compliance with Sigma, if you will. Um, so there have not been a lot of disagreements, but there is a dispute resolution clause. And, you know, sometimes we have to roll up the sleeves and really debate what's in, in the plan. Um, we haven't really had any disagreements so far when it came to procuring consultants. I think everyone has come to the table, um, from all three agencies with an open mind to work towards groundwater sustainability in Mission Creek.
I, I think to add to what Steve has said, is that with, with the new, the on, you know, with Sigma in existence now, it sets the standard for what that report must contain. A lot of it is just information that they're asking for. It's not that, it isn't a matter of us arguing over, you know, the results. The results are gonna be what, what they are, whether we like it or not.
It's very heavy data-driven, yes.
Heavy. And, and, and the state is the one that dictates what they want to see.
Right.
And, uh, and they've approved our plan and, and our report, which basically the numbers are gonna be what they are. We're gonna go out and measure these wells, and we're gonna look at the, the hydrology in general and then the modeling, and we're gonna, and then we're gonna have to report it according to what the state dictates we have to do.
Okay, thanks. I was just kind of making sure that, you know, um, that we weren't just a stakeholder in having to pay, pay for this, but we do have a say in what's going on. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And in fact, a, a lot of what has happened with Sigma on the upside is that they have requested much of what we have been saying we needed to have. So we're pretty comfortable with the fact that our groundwater offer is being protected by this process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is that, is that fair to say, Steve?
Yes, very much so, General Manager.
Okay. Anything further? Okay, uh, moving on to item nine. Resolution 2022-28 authorizing the filing of an application for round two Sustainable Groundwater Management Implementation Grant Program for the Mission Creek Sub Basin. It's recommended to adopt resolution 2022-28 authorizing the filing. Uh, I just stated that, so I'm not gonna complete. Um, Director Wall, or, excuse me.
Again, I'm gonna let, uh, Steve and I, you know, discuss these and, and deal with this, but I'm gonna let Steve tell you the
Okay.
Tell you what, what this is all about. It's a different kind of grant. And it's, and it's something we can use for a certain area within our district. Okay, Steve, go on.
Uh, thank you, General Manager. So, uh, again, following the passage of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, um, there was a Proposition 68 that was approved by the voters, I believe in 2019. I may have that date wrong, but regardless, it set aside specific funding to help agencies implement Sigma. Um, that went this, including, excuse me, preparing, uh, planning dollars to pair, prepare groundwater sustainability plans, update alternative plans, and then to implement the projects and management actions identified in those plans. Um, back in 2020, we brought a similar resolution to the board to get, um, round one Sustainable Groundwater Management Planning Funding. And we were successful in securing, I believe the number was around $400,000 towards updating the Mission Creek Sub Basin Alternative Plan. Um, similarly, for this round, it's focused on implementation of those alternative plans and groundwater sustainability plans. The funding is to groundwater sustainability agencies for the implementation of Sigma projects. Round one, we were not eligible for because it was for only critically overdrafted basins. Um, DWR has labeled the Mission Creek Sub Basin and Indio Sub Basin as medium priority, which are now eligible for funding under round two. The 2022, uh, Mission Creek Sub Basin Alternative Plan Update identified a slate of projects and management actions that the three agencies could take over the next 20 years to achieve sustainability in the groundwater basin, or rather, continue sustainably managing the groundwater sub-basin. So what we're planning to do, or what's in progress now, is the Mission Creek Sub Basin Management Committee is preparing a grant application seeking around $16 million in grant funding for four different projects. It's for the Groundwater Quality Protection Program Area A Septic to Sewer, a recycled water project, um, money towards the Salt Nutrient Management Plan Update Process, and outreach funding for the CB Water Council programs. All four of those projects were identified as critical projects and management actions towards sustainability of the groundwater basin. Um, the grant requires a 25% local cost share. And this resolution is again required by DWR confirming that we, Mission Springs Water District authorized CBWD to submit an application on our behalf and enter into an agreement with DWR if funding is, um, awarded towards our slate of projects. Um, and with that, I'll answer questions.
Uh, I might add before you, you go there is that, um, this doesn't, at this point, there is no fiscal impact. We'll be back to the board if we, if we are successful at getting a grant.
Okay, alright. Director Sewell?
Yeah, the slate of projects, is that something you could elaborate on? And should we not get the grant funding? Is that, those projects something we're still planning on moving forward with, or would it be more if we were to receive the, the funding?
Uh, great question, Director Sewell. The Salt Nutrient Management Plan that, that is moving forward, um, the board has already approved, um, the fiscal impact for that, and that is already underway. What we're asking for is grant funding to help backfill some of the costs for that plan. So that's
There we go.
Now we're back. Okay. Sorry for the disruption. I know we had a technical problem, so we had to, uh, suspend, uh, the meeting until it was remedied. Um, we left off on item eight, a letter of agreement for collaboration and cost sharing for the Mission Creek Sub Basin Annual Report. Ivan, do you remember what your question was that you asked?
It was nine, wasn't it? It was, uh, item nine, actually.
Item nine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
About the grant.
And yeah, my question was basically just, if we, um, don't secure the grant, are all these projects still moving forward?
Oh.
And?
If, once we get funding for them, yeah.
Okay, yeah, Steve was, uh, Mr. Ledbetter was in process of answering when we cut off.
Well, Steve, did I say something wrong?
No, Director Sewell, you're, you're correct. As I noted before we got cut off, the CB Water Council and Salt Nutrient Management Plan will continue to move forward, but the groundwater, or excuse me, the Septic to Sewer Project and the Recycled Water Project, those will be subject to, uh, receiving grant fundings to move forward.
Great, thank you.
Okay, uh, Director Griffith?
Uh, no, no questions.
Vice President Wright? Director, uh, Grasha, any questions?
Uh, no, not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item 10. Approved change order number one with L O Lynch Quality Wells and Pumps Incorporated for an on-call well and booster maintenance and repair services. It's recommended to authorize the general manager to approve change order number one with that company. Uh, and with that, I'll go ahead and, pardon, do you wanna?
Yes, well, you, you, you actually have had seen parts of this as we've moved forward with, and I think in the general manager's report, but Danny will elaborate on the details of this particular agenda item.
Okay.
Danny?
Danny is not back on the meeting, sir.
Oh. Can?
I'm, I'm reaching out now.
Um, she's reaching out.
Okay, basically, this is, um, you know, a competitive process we went through and, and, uh, L O Lynch, uh, got the bid and, but they were, you, you know, even though we'd go through a competitive process when we look at the force account, but we had some work that needed to be done that, that exceeded our existing, uh, uh, not to exceed, so we need to come back and.
We got, we got, we got Danny on.
Okay, Danny.
Danny, we're on the Lynch order item.
My apologies. I, apparently my computer was struggling to get started. Thank you for that. General Manager, did, uh, did you just want to cover my item?
Yeah, I want you to cover item 10. No, 10, excuse me. I apologize. Item 10.
Thank you.
Lynch, yellow Lynch.
My apologies. Good afternoon, President Martin, members of the board. Item 10, uh, in your agenda packet pertains to change order number one for L O Lynch, uh, Quality Wells and Pump, and the amount of $400,000 for the on-call well and booster maintenance and repair services contract. Back in February of '22, we executed, or we awarded the contract, rather, for the on-call work. And it includes well and booster repairs, routine and preventative maintenance. On an as-needed basis, the dollar amount for that contract at that time was $150,000. We also executed similar contracts with two other contractors for that same program for $150,000. L O Lynch Wells and Pump, uh, provide the lowest cost for the repairs for the two bunch, uh, booster station, Wells 26, 32, and 33. And the necessary, necessary repairs exceed the original contract price. Change order one increases the current agreement amount from $150,000 to $400,000 and allows staff to continue the repairs at two bunch, uh, two bunch well station, 26A, 32, and well 33. And, I'm sorry, just grabbing my notes. This work totals roughly $362,000 with contingency. It left a shortfall in the contract for 212, 600. That's why we're bringing this to the board today. Work has completed at well 26A within the contract amount. And it's about to start at well 33, and it's planned, being planned for two bunch booster number one in our Little Morongo well 32 site. With that said, staff is requesting consideration for authorizing the general manager to approve change order one with L O Lynch Quality Pumps, Wells and Pumps in the amount of $400,000.
I, you know, just to basically elaborate a little bit more, this is essentially an emergency work. You know, this is just operational costs that we need, that we've didn't expect, but the well started to, you know, fail or they needed to be rehabbed. So is that fair to say, Danny? Or maybe you want to say it a little clearer?
Uh, some of it's being handled on an emergency basis, correct, but some of it has, some of it, uh, for example, the well 32 site was a request for repair by our state, uh, sanitary engineer during our sanitary survey. Those are leaky boosters or leaky mechanical seals on three booster, on two booster pumps in a well. But well 26 does fall into that emergency situation. It's one of our primary, well 26A, it's our secondary well in, in that zone. And it left us in a pinch, so we had to perform that work quite quickly. Well 33 is in a similar fashion. It's also emergency work.
And, 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 you know, I mean, I, I might have characterized it as emergency, but when the state says that we need, they want to see us do something, we need to be prompt in responding to their request.
Okay.
So all of these items are just items that we, that we need to do.
Okay. Any, uh, any questions from the board? Uh, Director Grasha?
Uh, not really. I, just some thoughts, but I'll keep them to myself just for the sake of, uh, community.
Okay. Uh, Director Sewell?
No.
Director Griffith?
I do. And just for clarification, because I was not here back in February, so I know we had this, uh, contract for, uh, maintenance and stuff. And you said, okay, that, so the 26 was something a little bit more, and 32, um, of those others, are any of these something that were unexpected? Or was it just, uh, because I, I don't have the original contract to refer to, um, so I'm just kind of trying to get, uh, in my head, what is the extra steps that we're taking that would warrant, um, the extra cost?
Uh, the, yeah, all these, well, I'll let Danny answer it, but most of these are unexpected, yes.
Okay.
Danny, go ahead and explain that or answer that question if you would.
Thank you, General Wall. Director Griffith, that's a great question. In February, what we did is we requested three on-call contracts to take care of routine or preventative maintenance or emergency work. And that, that vehicle or that, those contracts would allow us to have something in place for the as-needed work. And it covered everything such as these repairs from either maintenance to full rehabilitation. So in this case, what we do with those contracts is we take the scope of work that's in the current staff report, and we ask all three of our on-call contractors to provide a proposal, and then we go with the lowest cost.
It, 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 it really provides us with kind of a two-step competitive process, but at the same time, it gives us the authority to move forward. If we hadn't have exceeded 150,000, we probably, we would not need to come back to the board.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Wright?
No.
Okay. Moving on to item 11. Approved change order number one with TriStar Contracting Two Incorporated for on-call sanitary sewer repair services on First Street, Fourth Street, Sixth Street, and Seventh Street. Director Wall, or?
Uh, yeah, well, I mean, Danny will, Danny will give you the details of this, but essentially, it's the same thing. We're talking wastewater here. Okay, Danny?
Thank you.
I was promoted.
Yeah.
Thank you, General Manager Wall. Similar to, to item 10, this is, this is also another on-call contract. So agenda pack, in your agenda pack, item 11 covers a change order with TriStar in the amount of $400,000 for sanitary sewer repairs. In June, we took also contracts to the board with TriStar and TriCo. There were two different companies. And we, they were awarded $150,000 contracts for, again, emergency repair work, maintenance and repairs as needed. And recently, our wastewater staff, our collection staff, after performing sewer line video inspections, they found that there were four areas in the sewer, uh, where sewer lines needed to, uh, repairs. Some of those were indicating where the, the main line was actually collapsing, and we can, we couldn't get our camera through. So after identifying those areas, we also sent both of, or sent the four repair locations roughly about 300 feet in pipe repair. We sent those to both TriCo and TriStar. TriCo came in at 353,520, TriStar came in at 271. In order to complete this work, staffs requesting a change order from their original $150,000 amount to a $400,000 contract amount. The contract amendment includes the original costs, uh, in, in, included, which is the 271,598,000. The contingency just, uh, over $27,000. And we also left roughly $101,000 for future work, since this contract has quite a bit of life left in it for any other, uh, routine or, or emergency work that may come about. The contractor has started this work. They've, uh, started this week on Seventh Street, and they're about to start, I believe, uh, today, in fact, on Sixth Street. And as we typically do, this is out in the roadway, so we, we coordinate with the city, we notify residents. And with all these types of projects, access to the properties for, for residents are still maintained. So with that said, that concludes my report. I, I'm happy to answer the questions.
Anything further from you?
Nothing further. Danny, Danny did a good job describing it, similar to the previous one.
Okay, Director Sewell, any comments?
Yeah, just a little curious. Do we have, um, a cause that all this damage happened? I know, uh, I think it was a coma we had a while back that had the root intrusions. Is it something similar, or is this just, uh, the age of the pipes?
Great question, Director Sewell. This is mainly caused by, by tree roots. So.
And, and something we wouldn't know, but we're, in a way, it's a bit of a preventative process where we TV'd it. We do TV all our lines. But we're, we could have a big problem if we don't repair it right now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Director Grasha, any questions or comments?
Just, uh, to point out that it was tree roots that caused the leak at the reservoir system that flooded eight city blocks. So I, I guess that's something we should probably focus on keeping an eye on. But thank you for what you guys are doing out there. I know you've got limited resources and a whole lot of, uh, Band-Aids spread throughout the system. I wish this board would take more, uh, put more attention in preventative maintenance and upkeep of the system, and less attention on building new buildings and taking care of pensions for fat cats that, uh, run this place and systems throughout the state. It's, it's, it just boggles the mind that this is able to continue on.
That, uh, run this place and systems throughout the state. It's, it's, it just boggles the mind that this is able to continue on.
President Martin, I may, I, I can add some information that if you.
Okay.
Director, Director Grusha. This is similar. We have, after that issue that was, that happened in December twenty-sixth, have done evaluations of the areas that have congested. Trees in the past, the district has been proactive working with the city and, and worked in areas to eradicate some of the tamarisk trees that are. Are invasive species to this community. The video. That General Manager was speaking about, the inspection is a preventative maintenance component of what we do. But we are, we are keeping our fingers in the pulse of that. So if I can provide any more information on that.
Thank you very much.
Director Griffith.
I have nothing.
Vice President Wright.
Uh, yeah, Danny, are these some of the very older lines that were put in back in the seventies?
Vice President. Right. This is a sewer line and they very well may be some of the area eighty-one areas back in seventy-two. But I, I will give you my, my position on that. It is clay pipe, metrified clay pipe. It's been in the ground for thousands of years. It's tried and true. So age in this case has been a very, hasn't been a factor in any type of issues with our, our system.
Okay, great, thanks.
We, we, we actually in many area, in, in some areas in the water side, we, we, we need to start, you know, looking at it. And we, we actually have another process that we're going through. Called a, you know, a, a, a master plan, water and sewer master plan that will identify those and, and the replacement of those. Um, so we, we have an entire program where we're looking at it.
Well, I know we, we.
We did it yet, but.
I know we have a good maintenance, uh, program, and I know sometimes the maintenance gets, gets a little bit put aside when we have a lot of developments going and stuff. And then when the developments slow down a little bit, then we, we do a lot of maintenance. It's just kind of the way it works. But okay, thank you.
Danny is, is a good point. These vitrified clay pipe is, is an amazing, amazing material.
Is that what they used back then?
Well, they used it three thousand years ago.
Yeah, that too.
Pipes in the ground that are three thousand years old still. Except for if you have a tamarisk tree that gets a root in there, you have a problem.
Yeah, that's pretty common with.
We are, we, we have gone out and identified areas and we're, you know, going to go after those areas. It's, 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 you know, methodically.
My only comment is to repeat what, uh, somebody sent me. The, uh, uh, email not long ago. In an ideal world, there would be an ordinance mandating removal of tamarisk trees from private property, but that's outside our.
Drinks a lot of water, too.
Yes, yes. Anything further?
Nothing further.
Okay, moving on to item twelve. Acceptance of the Horton Wastewater Treatment Plant Influence Pump Station Odor Control Systems Project. Pardon?
Okay, um, I'm going to have Eric, uh, elaborate on this. Essentially, this is just a notice of completion standard. Standard process we go through when they have completed the project. Eric, would you like to take it from there?
Yes, sir. Thank you, uh, General Manager Wallen. Good afternoon, President Martin and members of the board. Item twelve in your agenda packet pertains to the completion of the Horton Wastewater Treatment Plant Pump Station Odor Control System Project. Last year, the Board of Directors approved a contract through a competitive bidding process. In which Adam Engineering. Uh, was awarded the construction and installation of this project to install, uh, the influence pump station odor control system. The completion of this project will reduce nuisance odors by using activated carbon to scrub. Airborne odors generated within the influence pump station and headworks area. Construction of the project has been completed and came in under budget. There is, there are no under, there are no outstanding, uh, construction items or claims. And upon board acceptance, staff will proceed with recording the notice of completion. And release the retention monies thirty-five days after that notice of recordation by county. Uh, I'm ready to answer any questions.
Hey. Any questions from the board? Ivan? Robert?
I have nothing.
Director Grusha?
I have no questions. Thank you for the.
Uh, Vice President Wright?
No, no, I don't.
And I have nothing. So, uh, thank you. We'll address this item on Monday. Moving on to item thirteen. Acceptance of Grant of Easement Deed for Public Water Utility Easement. Elvis Aranda, Fifteenth Avenue, New Water Service. Pardon?
Um, this is, I mean, I, I, if you look at the, at the background and the agenda information, you'll, it explains what goes on. But Eric will, will elaborate on that. We're just accepting an easement. In a line that we noticed we didn't have an easement for, so. Okay, Eric, you want to take it from there?
Yes, sir. Thank you, General Manager Wallen. Uh, good afternoon, President Martin and members of the board. Item thirteen in your agenda packet pertains to the acceptance of grant of easement deed for public water, for a public water utility easement. Now, recently, engineering staff performed a plan check of water improvement plans for a proposed single-family home. That will front Fifteenth Avenue. Staff noticed that there is no easement for the existing twelve-inch water main. And that is currently installed and currently in service and maintained by MSWD. The easement pertains to the east thirty-foot side of the parcel. For which the, uh, twelve-inch water line is in a north-south orientation. Now, the applicant, Mr. Elvis Aranda. Has expressed interest in this easement being recorded and executed by MS, by Mission Springs Water District for service to his project. Uh, according to this needed easement will provide legal right to access, operate, and maintain. This water main in perpetuity. Uh, I stand ready for any questions.
Hey, uh. No. Director Sewell, Director Grusha, any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, Director Griffith.
I have none. Thank you.
Vice President Wright. Okay. Item fourteen. Resolution number twenty-two-two dash twenty-nine. Adoption of the Mission Springs Water District Injury and Illness Prevention Program. Pardon?
It's a resolution that, uh, we need to, to adopt. Uh, I'm going to have Bassam. Uh, provide you with the background, so the stage is yours, Bassam.
Thank you, General Manager. Uh, good afternoon, President Martin, members of the board. Uh, in front of you today is adoption of resolution twenty-two-two dash twenty-nine. Uh, adoption of Mission Springs Water District's Injury Illness and Prevention Program. The purpose of an injury and illness prevention program is to establish. The framework for reducing risks associated with workplace injuries and illnesses. Identifying what is required to promote safety and health. And create an outline of policies and procedures to achieve the safety and health goals. Also included in, in this, uh, packet is the district's heat illness prevention program. Both of these programs are requirements of Occupational Safety and Health Administration or CALOSHA. Uh, Title Eight Regulations, uh, Section thirty-two oh three. Um, both of these documents have been updated by staff and reviewed by, um, Aqua JPIA. Uh, available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Anything further, Arden?
Oh, nothing further. I mean, it's.
Ivan?
Read them over the week.
No questions, thank you.
Director Grusha, any questions or comments?
I'll look over, over the weekend, and, uh, if I have any questions, are you going to be here on Monday to ask?
Yes, I will be, yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Director Griffith?
I have none. Thank you.
Vice President Wright?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to discussion items. Item number fifteen, Mission Springs Water District Regional Water Reclamation Facility. Anything further on that, Pardon?
Yes, Steve Ledbetter will give you his presentation. Always look forward to this.
Okay.
Fun to see the progress out there.
Okay, good afternoon again, um, President Martin, members of the board. Um, bear with me, I'm going to share my screen real quick. There we go. Okay, so I'll be running through some photos, uh, to present an update on construction progress at the regional water reclamation facility. Um, up through, um, this last week. Um, we're looking down on the north portion of the SBR tanks. So the SBR tanks, um, they can, the contractor completed the south half slabs and was working on the walls and did the north half separately. Um, so what you see in front of you, there's three gray panels, um, kind of darker gray. Those were just poured the morning of this photo. This photo was taking, taken on November tenth, last Thursday. Um, and you can see that they have these heat blankets down here ready to put over those concrete pads, um, to ensure that they cool. Or don't get too hot and stay within adequate temperature. Um, one thing to note, they're getting ready to finish up this whole north half slab. And they're expected to pour the final slab on the SBR tank, um, in the next two weeks. Um, in addition, they continued progress on the SBR tank wall reinforcements. Um, this is the very south end of the project site. Um, this is about a, a twenty-five foot tall wall. Um, and the next several slides, you'll kind of see that wall, the reinforcements in front of you, um, deforming and pouring of that wall. Um, in this photo, you can see the large crane is, is flying in a large panel, um, a form. That will form around the embedments, um, for the concrete to be poured. There are two panels, um, with the heat blankets on it. They were already poured. And another portion of that south wall that was poured recently, or excuse me, being formed up to be poured. Um, this photo was taken, uh, on the fifteenth, um, at five AM, um, during a wall pour. Um, so you can see the con- concrete trucks back up to the pump truck and that pump truck has a large boom that pumps the concrete over to start filling up the walls. Um, here you can see that that pump truck, the line coming out of that pump truck, there are actually workers inside the wall. Guiding where the concrete goes in the, inside the wall, and as it fills up, they kind of work their way out. You'll see the gentleman here on the right-hand side of the screen. He's got his full harness protection on. It ensures that he's safe while inside of the wall. And then on the left-hand side of the screen, as that wall gets finished up to grade. Um, all you'll see now, once all that's buried under concrete, is just a nice finished, uh, concrete portion at the top of that wall. Um, all of the south half SBR tank walls have been poured, um, and the contractor is now working on the north half, um, wall. Um, this photo highlights the concrete cylinder and slump testing that's taking place every day that there's a pore on site. Um, the gentleman in front of you works for GeoCon and what he's doing, he takes a, a wheelbarrow full of concrete. That's being brought to the site to, for the slab of the walls. And this in front of you is a cone and he fills that cone with concrete and does a slump test. Um, he'll fill that cone up with concrete, lift that off, and he'll check how far the con- concrete slumps from the top of that cone. And it has, and it's a, it's, it's measured in inches and it has to be within a certain percentage to pass. In addition, you'll see the back of his truck has several of these white cylinders. Um, those cylinders are filled with concrete. Taken back to a testing lab where they're cured. Those concrete cylinders are tested under a, I, under a hydraulic ram. At, uh, three days, seven days, fourteen days, twenty-one days, and twenty-eight days. And along that path, they're recording how much pressure that the concrete can hold to ensure that it cures to optimum pressure for the project. The project requires that all concrete meet four thousand five hundred PSI requirements. So we're ta- actively testing that as we go through the project on every single pore. I'll switch over to the operations building area. Um, these large green sewer pipes are for the belt filter press. Um, so once, um, the sludge is wasted from the project, it goes through a press that squeezes off any of the remaining wastewater. And then the remaining sludge cake gets, um, exported off-site, um, to pour fertilizer over in Arizona. Um, what you see in front of you is that those sewer pipes, these are, um, eight-inch sewer pipes that were being formed. And then the pouring of the concrete embedments. And then once that was completed, all of that area was backfilled and this is the. Bottom of the subgrade for the operations building. Uh, gentleman in front of you on your photos, working a compactor, and the gentleman, uh, in the middle there is checking grade. For those areas. You'll see there's a lot of differences in the slabs or, excuse me, the grades as we go through the operations building. Um, these kind of notch outs that you see in front of you, those are where the columns from the building will ultimately reside. That takes a much larger embedment, um, concrete and rebar structure to support the weight of the future building that will be sitting on top of this. Um, the contractor has completed the south half operations building slab and reinforcements. Um, so once those subgrades were prepared, they put down a vapor barrier, lay sand on top, compact that, and then put it, put down all the rebar and conduits that go into it. And then form it up. This morning, they actually poured the south half slab for the operations building. Um, lastly, the water service connection, so the water that will supply the plant, the potable water that will use for fire service. For the restroom and any other potable water service, they completed a hot tap of the twenty-inch main, twenty-four inch main, excuse me, that's in Little Morongo Road. Uh, this ductal iron pipe, pipe was installed by the district back in two thousand and four, and you can see it's still in fantastic condition. Um, what the contractor does is they bolt on this saddle, uh, and put on a gate valve, the red, uh, piece in front of you. And then they use a hydraulic drill bit to drill through and core through the pipe. Um, once that's done, they'll flush it out and then shut the gate valve. So now that's an active line, eight-inch line, ready to be extended into the project. The subphoto you, you see here on your left, that's the actual drill that cores out an eight-inch diameter, um, from the side of that pipe. And, uh, lastly, I, or at least on the photo presentation, I just want to thank the board for taking the time. And staff for taking the time out of their busy schedules to come out to the site. Um, we conducted two different site tours, um, to really show the magnitude of the project that's being completed. Um, I, I think it was really great to get everyone out there and show really how much work is being done concurrently. And how precise the work needs to be to ensure that we have a great finished product at the end of the day. With that. Um, I only had one other quick update on the grant. Um, and the grant, we've submitted the final budget approval form that's authorizing the district to start the reimbursement process. That's still in review and we're waiting on that to start the reporting and reimbursement process. Um, regarding the conveyance line. Staff is working through contracting with the contractor, uh, or excuse me, working through the contracting phase with the contractor. And we're planning to have a pre-construction meeting in December and issue a notice to proceed thereafter. Uh, we expect construction on the conveyance line that's going to deliver the flows to the treatment plant to begin. Um, after the first of the year, depending on, um, procurement of materials. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Hey. Director Grusha, any questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, I had a couple of questions about the, uh, uh, core sampling of the concrete. And I, I, I found it interesting, mind-boggling really, that you're allowing them to take, uh, the samples off of the property and not, uh. Require them to cure, uh, uh, here with the, with the project. Mo- moving those samples, uh, to a, uh, environmentally controlled, uh, facility so that they can cure when our project is in the desert. And not being properly cured, uh, clearly by the photographs that you've thrown, shown throughout this process. It's, it's scary to me, someone that's been involved in the, in the, um, that, that exact part of this, that kind of a project before. Um, I, I can tell you that, um, it raises serious questions about the quality of the work that we're going to end up with. And, uh, and about the, uh, uh, how, how it'll be possible to defend ourselves from, uh, uh, in a case when this, uh. Concrete begins to fail and it will. Uh, you can't, uh, use burlap over, uh, in the middle of summer over concrete and call it a proper curing process. And then moving the samples offsite, uh, and, and curing them in a, in, in, in a. Um, facility that, that gives different results than curing onsite is very troubling. So with that, I thank you, and I'd also like to point out that not all board members were invited to that little party you had out there in the desert. Uh, but, uh, I guess we'll remedy that, uh, uh, when the vote is finally tallied in a couple of days. Thank you very much.
Director Sewell?
Yeah, I just, um, one wanted to, to thank you for having us out. Like you said, it definitely gives, uh, all of your presentations, uh, a better idea of the scale of things. Um, and I was excited to, uh, to see the progress. Um, so thank you again.
Director Griffith?
Uh, I too want to thank you. It was a great day to go out there and see all the hard work. Um, it's. Uh, even more impressive in person. And so, um, I look forward to, uh, seeing the little updates. So I remember where we were and what's there. And, um, so it's kind of nice to see the progress. So thank you for that and for that report.
Vice President Wright?
Vice President Wright.
Uh, yes, Steve Ledbetter, would you comment on what Steve Grusha was just saying? Um, is that inaccurate?
Uh, thank you, Vice President Wright. I would like to respond to that. Um, no, that is not correct. The samples are pulled in accordance with all required standards. They are shipped directly to a lab that is certified specifically to cure the concrete and test the concrete in accordance with all standards. In addition, the concrete is managed onsite with cooling pipes and thermal blankets to ensure that the temperature is regulated throughout the curing process. There are several sensors that are installed and left and embedded inside of the concrete that continually monitor. During summer, we had to make sure that the concrete didn't get too hot during the hot days. So we had to run cooling pipes to make sure that the temperature stayed within range. Now that it's nice and chilly outside, well, that's a benefit, but it's also a detriment. We have to make sure that the keep those heat blankets on it, our cooling and heat blankets, but keep those blankets on it to ensure that the concrete does not cool too fast because it still will not meet um the requirement. So um, again, this the the concrete pouring, testing, curing is all done to all all standards that are required.
Okay, um. General Manager Wallam, any comments?
I can tell you that the standards were complied with. They are appropriate and they're all and and this was constructed according to uh all of the rules and regulations for construction that follow for civil engineering.
I I'll I'll add one more item. Our our inspection staff or the inspection staff that's onsite, they are specifically certified um to for the rebar embedments and for the concrete processing, curing, and placement. Um, those are special certifications that are done. If if you'd like to know those, I'll have to go research them and pull that information. I don't have it on the tip of my tongue, but um, the inspection staff out there are certified to what oversee what's being done.
I mean, I think the 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 nice thing that you got to see what was going on out there and the and the way those, the way that is being constructed is is it i- i- is exceptionally strong. Now, concrete can do anything. No, so we do, we take every precaution that we can in the construction. Um, so we're very comfortable that we're meeting all the standards.
Of course you did and of course you are.
Moving on to uh item sixty in Critical Services Center and Administration Building update, Arden.
That will be Monday.
Monday, okay. Uh, district holiday schedule.
Okay, um, this was uh it'll be last year, if you remember, Christmas and New Year's days occurred on Saturday. That means this year, they occur on Sunday. Um, but we're not going to ask uh that we uh like last year, you just gave everybody the the uh the time off. We closed the office uh during that period of time and um we talked to staff this year. Um, and we are proposing that um this year, we will just close the uh the 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 front uh reception area. Basically, we're closing it to walk-in or public uh a- access during that period of time, but we're not asking for any days off if uh there it it will give us time if we do basically shut the front door. Uh, it'll allow us to get some of the are caught up on a lot of our work that 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 is accumulating. Um, and the benefit to the district is provide staff uh time to take their leave if they if they want to. Uh, if they do take time off, they will use their their leave time, so it's not a cost to the district in any way. Um, so essentially, I I I'm just basically asking for your your blessing more than anything. I can I can make, if I need to, I can make that decision, but um, uh, this should not have any impact. It's, we don't disconnect anyone over Christmas. Uh, we have almost no traffic in the in the lobby. I mean, I think if we, when we do keep it open, we might see three to five people all week. Staff will be available to answer the phone, complete the paperwork for new customer connections and service. Fieldwork will be minimal, but we will have people here. Emergencies will be handled like they were last year. Um, and so we're just asking for your your blessing so you can think about it and give us your answer on Monday.
Okay, um. Is there any chance we can get the holiday schedule in writing? It's not contained in my binder. Item seventeen, so so that we know what we're voting on 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 Monday.
Yeah, you really, okay, I'm not sure you even need the vote and just because all we're gonna do.
I thought you said we approve it.
We're, I mean, it's not going to change if they take time off. They have to use vacation time.
Doesn't answer my question. Are we going to have something in writing that we can look at?
Well, if you if you would like, yeah.
Or is it something that you'll be able to present to us that we can uh?
We can present it that way on Monday.
Okay.
Have Oriana send you or or provide some more information, okay?
All right, sounds good.
I just have a question.
Sure.
So so what you're saying is that and typically in businesses, uh, if a holiday falls on a weekend, say on a Sunday, then then the employees get that Monday off. Are we saying that we are not going to do that this year?
No, we allow them, that's we'll we'll comply with our existing rules.
Okay.
Saying nothing.
So so they will get that day, that that Monday off, just not the rest of the week unless they take their own time.
Want to take
Okay.
Time off, it'll be according to the personnel standard.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy? Director Grusha, any comments, questions?
Uh, no comments, thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda, everybody take a look at the minutes over the weekend. That'll be the minutes from October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. A study session and a regular board meeting, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Take a look at those and we'll vote on those on uh on Monday. Register of demands, the register of demands totaling two million seven hundred and fifty-five thousand three hundred and one dollars and eighty-eight cents. Also, take a look at that, uh, anything you want to add to that, Arden?
No, no.
Okay, now, take a look at the uh at the packet on the register of demands and uh address any questions you have on that on Monday. Uh, directors reports, anybody want to go today? Nancy? Robert?
No, thank you.
Huh? Monday, okay. Uh, Director Russia, any you want to do uh today or Monday?
Well, I'll do it today. As everyone knows, an election just occurred and I was overwhelmingly elected to the Desert Water Agency Board of Directors. I don't I think I have one more meeting after this. I just want you to all know what uh uh an honor it's been for me to serve on this board and how much I look uh to the future of working with this board and resolving the issues between the two agencies that have plagued this board going back decades. And uh with that, I thank you very much.
Okay. And I I will also do mine on Monday.
I would like to add one thing and I may say this on on Monday, but uh I want to congratulate Director Ivan for your uh Volunteer of the Year Award at the State of the City, Desert Hot Springs today. So congratulations, well-earned.
Thank you.
Yes, that was very impressive. And Brianna almost missed it.
She made.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to General Manager's report.
Um, okay, and I think Marion um will probably do her report today and of course finance, our our turtle's gone, but we will not be, we're still doing the audit, so finance, there will not be a finance report, but Arturo can be available on.
So we're not doing a finance report either today or Monday?
I don't, yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, uh, Arturo will be here, but there there's nothing, but we don't know what those numbers are yet.
Okay.
Because they're being adjusted through the audit program.
Yeah.
Uh, how I do however, want to say that um, we're going to have a new agenda item that you've actually already voted on once. Uh, on uh it's with West Yost. I have Danny here to explain it to you if you want more detail, but you'll be able to see it when you get the the amended agenda for the Monday's meeting. It's just uh, this was with West Yost contract. Um, and you approved it. Uh, but unfortunately, the 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 attachment we found out was incorrect and I didn't want to move forward with it until I brought it back to you with the corrected uh uh amount on the attachment, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Right.
Uh, and that's it. And Marion, did you want to do your report today?
Yes. Thank you, General Manager Wallam, and good afternoon, President Martin um and members of the board. I have a short PowerPoint to share with you today that discusses many of the public affairs activities the district has undertaken in the past month. Additional information is available in the GM update in your packets. It's been a busy month. We participated in several community events. Uh, including the very successful and well-attended Happy Healthy Halloween event put on by the Desert Hot Springs Rotary. The district even got a special shout-out on social media from KESQ News Channel Three, who reminded folks to stay hydrated this Halloween with MSWD. We also hosted two Community Water One-O-One sessions at the Desert Hot Springs Library. The first session held on October twentieth focused on the water system and the second session focused on the wastewater system. Both sessions were very well attended and I'd like to thank the staff and the management who helped put it together. We have another Water One-O-One scheduled for December eighth focusing on the water sources and how we work with other water agencies locally and throughout the state. I also want to mention that we will again host the LifeStream team for a blood drive on December twentieth. What better way to give back to our community during the holidays than through a life-saving donation? Sign-up information is available on our website or you can visit lstream.org forward slash MSWD to make an appointment. On the outreach front, we've continued to partner with diffe- different civic and community organizations, including the Desert Hot Springs Women's Club, Friends of the Desert Hot Springs Library, the Rotary, and the Chamber of Commerce. In addition, to make it easier for organization organizations to sign up for tours and speakers, I've added a page on our website for community outreach that includes contact information and tour and event information. I've also been working with organizations like the Mission Lakes Country Club HOA and will now have a standing article in their monthly homeowner newsletter. In October, they featured information on our Water One-O-One and they had a status update on a septic-to-sewer project in their area. I also wanted to briefly mention the increased presence we have had recently within our schools. As part of our Groundwater Guardian efforts and our partnership with the Mission Creek Preserve, we've had multiple classes, visit the preserve and learn about our watershed. We also recently partnered with the Desert Hot Springs High School Real Academy again and we will be working with the students to script, videotape, and record a PSA on water conservation in the drought. We are currently in the project's planning stages, but I look forward to meeting with the students as they prepare for the project. In addition, I attended an educator workshop training last month hosted by CBWD and the Wat- Water Education Foundation. The training was held at the Whitewater Preserve and it was fantastic. The curriculum and the activity guide provides specific learning objectives and activities based on the National Science Teachers Association curriculum standards that are associated with each grade level. The book and the online database have hundreds of lesson plans for educators. I plan to offer at least one of these trainings every year specifically for our Desert Hot Springs teachers and provide them with a copy of the book and license to use the online database as we uh expand our Groundwater Guardian program. Also, last month, we received a couple of surprising accolades, including a thank you from the American Outreach Foundation for supporting the Power Chair Refurbishment Program that assists veterans and low-income seniors. On the screen are George B. and George W., who both recently gained their mobility back with the help of a refurbished motorized scooter. We also received a special community par- partnership award from the Palm Springs Unified Schools District, specifically from the Desert Hot Springs High School for supporting them and their programs. I had the pleasure of attending one of their community partner meetings, which included representatives from various civic community, church, and nonprofit organizations for an update on the changes being made at the school. Led by high school principal Omar Trinko, we learned how they are increasing college-going rates in several ways. For example, all seniors are now required to fill out the financial aid waiver for college, the FASPA form. They also have to fill out a college entry form and they have to put together a scholarship package. Even if those students are not planning to go to college, they're required to fill out these forms. This way, if they change their minds later, they will still have an opportunity for assistance and also understand how to file in the future. They are also working very hard to break down the violence and cliques that are on their campuses and I am really looking forward to continuing our partnership and support of the students and the new administration. Planning is also moving forward for our seventieth anniversary celebration, which will take place on Friday, February third, at Mission Springs Park. We have adopted a special seventieth anniversary logo treatment that'll be incorporated into our outreach materials starting in January. It's not a full rebranding of the district. Instead, we are adding an overlay to our current MSWD logo. We're also working on promotional materials for the event and the committee is starting to reach out to vendors. Shown on the screen is one of the early comps for our billboard. This still needs a little bit of work. I'd like to make the date a little bit more uh popped and the uh that title itself pop a little bit more, but I did want to give you a little sneak preview, kind of the direction that we're going in. And I'm also pleased to share that the calendar artwork has shipped to the printer and we should have our calendars in hands the week of December fifth. Uh, we will be announcing and contacting our winners that week and hopefully I'll have the top three winners pr- present for a special acknowledgement at one of your upcoming board meetings. All students that submitted artwork will receive a congratulatory certificate and a copy of the calendar ma- mailed to their homes. We will also share ca- showcase everyone's work on our website and our social media as we promote the calendar. And lastly, I have three videos that I'd like to share with you today. The first is a special tribute video uh to that we shared on social media on Veterans Day that featured MSWD family members who have served in our, served our country. My second video was a quick how-to-read-your-meeter video and my third is a new video from our mystery video series. As you may recall, uh, to add more humor and to more and more interest to our videos and to get more social media attention, we are creating a mix of short how-to videos um like How to Meet Your Reader combined with some scripted mystery series videos. Uh, we are going to do a little bit more fine-tuning on the audio levels and taking out some of the um watermarks on these, but um they're very close to being finalized. And with that, I will show you these videos. And next we'll go to the how-to video. And now, lastly, we have the fun mystery murder series.
It was a fairly typical day for a Desert Hot Springs family, but when they returned home, they discovered something they never expected. As they approached their home, they saw a yellow tag on the door. It warned about water waste at their home. The Smiths began to look around and it started to make sense. They spotted the broken sprinkler in their yard and fixed it. They began to look around for more water waste and noticed a kitchen faucet left running for no reason and a dishwasher that ran nearly empty.
Okay, so we should have fixed the sprinkler a month ago and turned off the faucet. Who knew that running the dishwasher after every meal would waste that much water? At least we know now and our water worries are over.
But that wasn't the end. There was an undetected leak lurking in the background.
The leak is coming from inside the house. I'm scared. The toilet tank keeps filling and even though no one is in the bathroom.
It's not a ghost. That phantom noise is the sound of money down the drain. You may not see it, but a leaking toilet can waste hundreds of gallons of water each day.
That door handle forced us to take a closer look at the mistakes we made over the years. Our lives will never be the same again.
Another water mystery solved thanks to a tip left on the door by Mission Springs Water. Another water mystery solved thanks to a tip left on the door by Mission Springs Water District. Until our next case, visit MSWD.org for more water answers.
And that concludes my presentation for today. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Marion.
Thank you, Marion. I just want to comment that that was awesome work and you continue to impress me with your outreach to the community and your involvement and stuff like that. You're first-class employee. Thank you so much. And Ivan, do you have any comments or?
Yeah, I really liked the maybe getting away from so much of seeing our board members faces and doing some more playful things that will hopefully engage our people on social media. I think it's a tough battle to compete with some things online and making things more playful, I think will, will help get some more eyes onto our videos. So thank you.
Director Griffin?
I just have to echo a great work as always. And like I said before, you're an asset to this organization. Thank you.
Nice person, right?
Um, yeah, Marion, on one of the, the graphs in, in your report here, Mission Spring incoming calls for Mission Springs total district calls and customer service calls, do we get the customer service calls, do, do we get any, any people that are that have real issues that are really angry at us or, or don't like our customer service? They, they say they got a bad I've been hearing this a lot lately and I just was wondering, does anybody call here and complain? We have nobody at the board meetings. I was just wondering.
Director Wright, I'd like to defer to April Scott. She's our manager of customer service if she's on the line.
Are you there, April?
I am. Good afternoon. President Martin, members of the board. We have not received any formal complaints about our customer service. If you've been, if you've heard something from a customer, I would welcome them to please reach out to me directly. At the district number, my extension is one two zero. So I can kind of dig into the issue a little further and hopefully make sure that that doesn't happen again.
Okay, great. So you don't get any calls or anything. I was just wondering if the, what I hear was true or not. So, okay, thank you.
I can assure you that every water district gets calls from unhappy customers, but we try to handle them as well as we can and we're very kind to our customers.
That, I, yes, I realize that. That's, that's why I was asking. Okay, thanks.
More than most districts.
Director Grusha?
Well, you know, then we have elections and people get to really express themselves in the quiet of a, of a, of a private voting booth. And that's how you find out how people really think about you. So goodbye, Nancy.
You're such a class act, Steve. Moving on to district council comments. Okay. Any further comments from directors? Nancy?
Uh, no, not today, but maybe Monday.
Okay. All right. Crushed, Director Grusha.
Uh, no comments.
Okay. With that, we'll adjourn until Monday. Thank you.